April special workshop session to order. This evening, we are joined with Dr. Jim Macken, our legal counsel, and we're going to be doing some training in regards to ethics and how board operates. At this point in time, we'll have a pledge of allegiance, if you would please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jim, floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. Laws. I hope everybody can hear me okay. I'm running this through my phone. I'm going to start talking about conflicts of interest, which are governed by our Public Integrity Commission statute, located in twenty-nine Delco, Chapter fifty-eight. Our public integrity laws and rules are very simple, and they're very short, but they're very case-specific, and they're very complex in application. Many people have their hands in many activities. You board members are all volunteers, and we are most grateful for your volunteerism and your sense of community and what you do for education in Delaware. But remember, you are in the public eye. Remember that there are consequences with regard to violations of the Public Integrity Rules and Regulations. For some reason that I am unable to explain, the Public Integrity Commission comes down very hard in their scrutiny of school board members. So you are in unpaid volunteer positions. Rather than cutting you some extra slack because you are volunteers, in my experience representing seventeen of the nineteen districts, I have found that the Public Integrity Commission takes a very heavy hand with regard to school folks. And I want you to remember that and be conscious of that in all of your dealings. And dealings with the Public Integrity Commission can arise in many situations. And I'm going to go through what the rules are. I'm going to go through how they're applied, and go through some common pitfalls. But by all means, this is intended to be interactive. We set aside plenty of time for questions afterwards. But if you have questions during my presentation, I ask that you please feel free to interrupt me at your leisure. First thing to think about is whether or not the Public Integrity Commission rules apply to us. And you may say, but I am a volunteer. I am not a state employee. I am not a state officer. But the way the statute is drafted, even though under Beck versus Clamont Independent School District, which gives you an idea of how old that nineteen seventy-three case is, even though we are a separate political subdivision of the state of Delaware, the public integrity rules do apply to school employees and school volunteers. So while you're not getting paid, and while you are not in any way volunteering for the state, you are volunteering for a political subdivision, pardon me, the public integrity rules do apply to you. Unlike many situations, there is individual exposure for you. You could be subject to penalties on a civil level in the event that the Public Integrity Commission rules that you committed a violation. They often also refer matters to state and federal officials for criminal prosecution. So as a big thank you for your volunteerism, you need to be aware of the fact you could be criminally prosecuted in the event that you were accused of something by the Public Integrity Commission, and it was referred over to the Department of Justice. That would basically fall under the abuse of power provisions set forth in Title XI. There are two particular criminal specific offenses that individuals could be charged under. The first is official misconduct. The second is profiteering. So what does your typical Public Integrity Commission case look like? How does it go? Well, I often said the Human Relations Commission is the worst place to be a defendant in the state of Delaware. And I've been representing all these public agencies. I've been before the Human Relations Commission more than any attorney in the state of Delaware by far. And then I started having a number of Public Integrity Commission complaints. And I realized that the Public Integrity Commission is the last place I want one of my clients to be because these people definitely have an axe to grind. And frequently, it's not our fault. It's other people's fault. I mean, look at what's going on right now, and I can't mention names, but look at the city council person, former city council person from the city of Wilmington. He allegedly diverted funds from a slush fund at the city of Wilmington to a nonprofit that he controlled. You know, that is a prime case of something that the Public Integrity Commission would have an appetite to jump onto. Contracts with businesses, conflicts of interest. You know, we have had situations where we've had school officials, whether they're employees in the administration or whether they are board members that think, you know, you know, let's say you're serving at Colonial, and you also want to serve on the board of a charter school. Now, I don't represent charter schools. I represent school districts because there is an inherent conflict of interest between the charter school movement and the existing school district. So if I wanted to sit on a charter board, and I was also a school board member at Colonial or an administrator in Colonial, there's a pretty good argument that there is a conflict of interest there. Some nonprofit boards are a conflict of interest. There are many anti-public education nonprofit boards that exist in the United States. They want to reform public education, or some want to do away with publication, with public education. Is that a conflict of interest to want to do away with public education when you have sworn an oath to be a board member of a public school? Well, I mean, we can obviously see arguments both ways, but the important thing is that context matters. What is done in your capacity as non-board members and your volunteerism for other pursuits may raise this very nebulous concept that the public integrity regulations hold, which is that there cannot be a specter of impropriety. There doesn't have to be actual proven misconduct. There doesn't have to be actual proven impropriety. But what they look at is they look at with no threshold. They look at, is this person's independence in their capacity as a fiduciary to the school board impaired in any way? Or may the public view this person's impartiality and independence as being impaired? So it's a very high standard of conduct that we have to hold ourselves to. We can't cut corners, and we can't hope that things get swept under the rug because if we know one thing, it's that our local media loves to go after public officials when they are accused of misconduct. So a few general rules that come out of the statute and the regulations. We cannot address matters if it would affect our personal or private interests. And there is no threshold on that. So say, one of you has a business, and you want to advance that business interests through your board position at Colonial School District. And you want to have a no-bid contract, or you want to inflate the value of the contract because you know what the budget is, or you want to inflate the value of the contract because you know what other competitive vendors are submitting their bids for, or anything like that. With no threshold, with no dollar amount, any sort of matter where your personal interests or your private enterprise interests are being put ahead of your fiduciary duty to the Colonial School Board will be considered a violation, and you can have no influence at all. So what is that? Well, frequently, we'll have situations that arise where we talk about a matter, and we talk about a contract for, you name the service. Let's just call it snow clearing, for an easy one because our school custodians do our school, our school snow plowing. So that makes it an easy gimme. I know I won't offend anybody by using snow plowing as an example. And you own a snow plowing business, and you advocate for your snow plowing business to get the contract because you have the best new trucks and the best plows and the best workers, and you're going to do it for the best price. And when it comes time to vote, you think, oh, wait a second, I have a conflict of interest here. So I am going to abstain from voting. The Public Integrity Commission will without a doubt hold you in violation because you talked about it. You need to, in a similar situation to that, you need to do more than abstaining from the voting. You need to completely step out of the room if it's something that's being talked about in executive session perhaps. Not that a snow contract could be talked about in an executive session, but the point is, you can't talk about it. You can't influence. You can't write a memo about it. You can't weigh in. You got to do more than just abstaining from the vote. Now, think about, think about Smyrna, for example. Okay, you're Colonial. You're a five-member board. Think about Smyrna for a second. All five of their school board members have a direct family member who is employed in the school district. Indian River, seven of them do. I don't know offhand how many of your five, of you five, have an employee, an employee spouse, or an employee son, or an employee daughter. Okay? There are situations where school board members have to vote because, let's say, they're ratifying a contract in Smyrna, and all five of them say, wait a second, my wife works here. My husband works here. My kid works here. Business could never get done. So there is a carve-out in the statute that says, in the event somebody has a personal or private interest, i.e. because their spouse works in the district, and we're voting on a union contract for all teachers, and the spouse is a teacher, it is not a conflict of interest as long as the personal interest is not advantaged more so than the class of people. Okay? And that's because of the Delaware way. That's because we know that many school boards have many school board members that have many spouses and kids and siblings, et cetera, working in their districts. If that wasn't the rule, business never could get done. Now, the Public Integrity Commission, like I said from the onset, is not a happy place to be a defendant. They have taken the position, and they did not refer this for prosecution to the extent that, or to the effect of it actually being prosecuted. But we had a Sussex County case where a school board was adjusting salaries across the board for all administrators. And the school board vice president at the time had a brother who was a principal at one of the district high schools. And the school board member voted, the school board vice president voted in favor of a salary adjustment for all administrators, and it affected directors, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, all the principals, and all of the assistant principals. It didn't affect his brother more so or less so than any of the other principals on a percentage basis. It was just an across-the-board, everybody's going to get X increase this year. The Public Integrity Commission completely read out of the statute the language that says, in the event you have a personal interest and you vote, it's not a violation as long as it affects everybody equally. So that, I think, was a clear mistake by the Public Integrity Commission, but it is something to be mindful of. They are sending a message that they want everything to be done above board with regard to family members of all public officials who serve in any capacity. The next general rule from the statute is that we cannot assist a private enterprise before an agency. So let's say you don't have a personal or a private interest. But let's go back to my snow plowing analogy, my snow plowing example, I'm sorry. You're a school board member, and you work for Atlas Chemical, Ajax Chemical. You have nothing to do with snow plowing, but your friend, your next-door neighbor, your college buddy, and anything along those lines has a snow plowing business. And you use your influence as a Colonial School Board member to make sure that your buddy gets the job. Make sure that your buddy gets the contract, to make sure that he gets inside information to know how much to bid, to make sure that she gets a better rating on the scoring metrics when you're trying to select your next contractor. That is clearly a violation. The next thing from the statute says that you cannot contract with the Colonial School District for any amount over $2,000 unless it's subject to competitive bidding. So let's say you have that snow plowing business, and that's your business now. You run it. You own it. You and your spouse own it. And you want to bid on the Colonial job. Are you allowed to bid on that job? Yes, but it's got to be a sealed competitive bidding, and you can't influence it in any manner. Best thing to do, just to avoid the specter of impropriety, is to not bid on it. Bid for other work. Don't bid for the Colonial work. This led to a really interesting case, again, in Sussex County. I had a school board member of one of our districts, and the school was undergoing a renovation, and they were putting in a hospitality area, a hospitality training program. And they were also outfitting a kitchenette sort of area, not a stove and an oven and a microwave, but just a little, you know, you can have a little micro fridge, and you can wash your hands, you know, it's a little sink. The school board member said, I will donate my employees' time to install all of this, which would have been, you know, fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars. And I will sell you all of the countertops and cabinets at cost, which was about $20,000, would have been about $30,000 at a fair market. So he took a $48,000 job and charged the school district $20,000 for it. Basically, a tremendous act of volunteerism and philanthropy. He believed in the school system, believes in the school system. And he did this out of the kindness of his own heart. Remember, there's no statute limitations on Public Integrity Commission complaints because when somebody found out about it, and that person didn't like the other person, they filed a complaint with the Public Integrity Commission alleging that this was a contract for over $2,000. It involved the business of the board member, and it was not competitively bid. The upshot of that is there is no exception in the Public Integrity Commission rules for situations where people do benevolent acts out of the kindness of their own heart, and they lose money on the deal in order to benefit the school system. Next rule is you, as officials, cannot accept any money, any compensation, a job, or anything of value if it could impair your judgment as a school board member. Nothing can lead to preferential treatment. Nothing can be made decision-wise outside of normal channels. Nothing can be done to affect confidence in government. So those are the general rules right out of the statute. So what does that mean in application? Many school districts have policies that say, if you serve on the school board for two or more terms, so ten years or more, you get a free lifetime pass to attend all athletic events in the district for the rest of your life. Is that a violation? No. Okay? You have to volunteer. You can't be paid. But that is what's called de minimis. It's a de minimis gratuity and recognition of board participation. It encourages people to participate. It encourages people who are at events to see somebody who shows up and gets to attend for free because of what they have done for the school district. Nobody in their right mind is going to say that is a violation of the Public Integrity Commission when you give up 120 nights or more, or more, right? Because there are special board meetings as well. You give up 120 nights of your life or more, and you get a free admission to watch our basketball and football games. So that's not a concern. If you get a holiday basket from vendors, is that a problem? No, not unless it's, you know, $100 or more and intended or giving the appearance that it's going to influence what you're going to do going forward. Here's where we have problems, okay? You are selecting a construction manager to put in addition on at district office. I'm just making up a hypothetical here. And you've got bids. It's got to be sealed openings. And even though it's a sealed opening, the night before bid opening, one of the general contractors invites you and your spouse to go to Del Frisco's in Philadelphia for an expensive dinner. Does that give the appearance of impropriety? Absolutely. One of the contractors says, hey, you know, why don't you use my beach house for a week this summer? Does that give the appearance of impropriety? Yes, it absolutely does. There are going to be tough situations where you find out that one of your friends owns a business that wants to do business with Colonial, and they're in some kind of vendor, they are some kind of vendor to the district. They want to allow you to use their beach house. They want to take you out to dinner. You know, nothing keeps you from saying, hey, the timing isn't really right at the moment. We've got a big project going on for which you're a prospective bidder. Let's do it next year. Let's do it when the time is more appropriate so that things don't look like a quid pro quo of any sort. Next thing to discuss is disclosure of information. You are bound by the Public Integrity Commission rules, in addition to many other federal and state laws, to maintain confidentiality. This is a big, big, big one. If you make disclosures outside of a public board meeting that you're not authorized to make, you could be not only subject to the rules of the Public Integrity Commission, but also individually sued. And how could that work? Let's assume there's a student who's up for expulsion, and you say, hey, you know, you're at the Wawa, and you say, you know, hey, that's the kid over there that just got expelled last year. Could you be sued under FERPA, under the Family Education Rights Privacy Act? Yes. And would that be a lawsuit against you personally? Yes. If you were to disclose personal health information that you became aware of with regard to an employee's Americans with Disabilities Act application for an accommodation, could you be sued individually? Yes. Yes, you could. And finally, you know, let's say there's a situation where you disclose, let's go back to our project at district office. You disclose to a competitive bidder how much other bidders are bidding. And, you know, let's say it's not a sealed bid proposal, but let's say it's a request for proposals situation. So non-sealed, non-public works. And, you know, let's just say it's for the architect or for an engineer, something that's not subject to the competitive bidding laws. Could you, in that situation, be sued individually? Yes, you could individually be sued and subject to the jurisdiction of the Public Integrity Commission. The statute says, you know, the penultimate thing that the statute says is you, as public officials, right, you are board members, you cannot do anything to discriminate on the basis of sex. Obviously, you cannot do anything to discriminate on the basis of gender. Even though you're not the employer, you are one of five individuals who are the employer as the board. So you cannot individually discriminate against school board employees or school board applicants, or, sorry, school district employees or school district applicants on the basis of gender. And the final thing that they say in the statute is the catch-all. You cannot do anything that raises the suspicion of violating public trust. Okay? Only, quote, "the appearance of a violation" is required. So everything that we do must be completely above board. What do you do when you have questions? You know, that's why Dr. Menzer and I are here. That's why Dr. Menzer's team and I are here. When questions arise, by all means, feel free to reach out. We frequently sign letters on behalf of your employers. The banks are big ones. The banks are typically requesting of us as counsel to the board to sign letters saying that the fact that you hold a position in a school district is not a conflict of interest as a matter of Delaware law because they have to deal with the Sarbanes-Oxley statute on a federal level. When you have questions, you can, and you're not comfortable coming to us or not comfortable going to Dr. Menzer's team, you can request an opinion from the Public Integrity Commission that is anonymous and confidential and free. You would write to the Public Integrity Commission. You would submit it by email through their portal and say, I am a school board member of the Colonial School District. I am contemplating doing this or that. Here is all the facts. And they will give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. If they give it a thumbs up, you cannot be accused of a Public Integrity Commission violation assuming that all the facts you gave them are accurate. If they give it a thumbs down, and you proceed anyway, unfortunately, we do so at our own peril, and you put it on their radar screen. So in those closer cases, sometimes, you know, we counsel in favor of better judgment in terms of not moving forward because once you put these things on their radar screen, you can, you know, come under their thumb for future investigation in the event that there's an allegation. You know, they'll say, hey, look, we told them not to do this, and they did it anyway.
Hey, Jim?
Yes?
So that's a perfect, you're talking about questions of me, and I know that the board members here feel comfortable speaking to me on a regular basis. They obviously aren't going to have access to you on a regular basis. I thought maybe the next fifteen minutes or so, or twelve minutes or so, they have now a chance to ask you questions. They've met you before at other times, but on this topic, given this specific topic, if there's any questions from the members, I think now would be a great time to start asking them so that they can get their questions answered.
Absolutely, Jeff. That's a great idea. I would just say, remember, we're in public, and we're being recorded. So let's ask these questions as hypotheticals because if you say, hey, I'm committing this violation, the whole world is going to know about it. But go ahead and just ask your questions, all as hypotheticals, please.
Any questions from members of the board for Mr. Macken?
Let's clear what they're doing. Who comprises the integrity board?
Who's on the integrity board? Who are the individuals? What is the body made of, Jim?
There are ten individuals appointed by the governor. They tend to be on for two or three years. It's one of those boards where people don't tend to stay on for multiple terms. It's a two-year term. They tend to serve one term and go their own ways. It it's a two year term. They they tend to serve one term and go their own ways. Whereas other state boards, other commissions are appointed and people serve, you know, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen years. We don't see the same people with a lot of tenure at the Public Integrity Commission.
Are they legal? Do they have legal background or are they across all all genders?
They're all comers, sir. They do have an attorney. Her name is Deborah Moreau and she is an employee of the Delaware Department of Justice.
Just since no specific questions are coming up and hypotheticals are always problematic. How frequently, you know, are school boards brought forward to this commission during a a year or or a span, Jim? What's the what's the the rate of coming before this commission? Because it's not one you hear a lot about, I don't think, right?
Yeah, so when it comes to school board members, much less so than school employees. School board members, it it's all, I don't like you and you don't like me, so I'm filing a complaint against you. It's all political in in my experience. That that's school board members have been brought before the the Public Integrity Commission. I I can tell you, without knowing for sure who reported each person, I I know who they were, because I know I know who doesn't like whom. Luckily, your board gets along. Not all school boards are are so fortunate. But I would say maybe once or twice a year, we have a situation that they actually go to, they actually have a complaint. And maybe once every two or three years, there'll actually be a hearing. Frequently, there'll be a complaint, there'll be a cursory investigation. And there'll just be a conclusion that what is alleged, even if it is true, does not amount to a violation. Most of those occur when, Mr. Laws, can I use you as an example? Because you're the president? You know, let's say Mr. Law's son is the the principal, uh, sorry, let's even easier example. Is is a teacher at the high school with a couple hundred other people who are school employees at the high school. And and somebody files a complaint saying, you know, Mr. Ted Laws committed a conflict of interest violation because he voted to give all teachers under the new contract, one percent in year one, two percent in year two and two percent in year three. That affects his kid, therefore it's a violation. He should have recused himself. And you know, we would file a response on behalf of the board member that says this is not a violation. See section fifty eight oh three B, fifty eight oh four B, that says, you know, it didn't affect his his kid more than it affected anybody else. Dismiss it and they dismiss it. But but where it gets more involved is when you've got a smaller class of people, it just affects, you know, just affects administrators. Those go to hearings sometimes. The 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 personal business ones are a big one where where, you know, that 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 situation in Sussex that I was telling you about. Here's somebody out of the kindness of their own heart. You know, that was probably the one of two I've had in the last five years. Out of the kind of his own heart, you know, got his got his hand slapped by the Public Integrity Commission. Now, how often do things happen with regard to school employees who are not board members? Much more often. And and it always happens, you know, let's say, let's say Jeff's kids, I know they don't work, I'm going to use Jeff as an example now or Dr. Menzer now, because I know his kids don't work in Colonial. But but let's say his kids did. And we didn't have up any sort of screening, so it, you know, it it appeared that Jeff's son worked directly for Jeff, was supervised by Jeff, got preferential treatment because of 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 Dr. Menzer. You know, those happen a lot. There's a lot of school districts where, you know, there's five or six employees who are all of the same family. And and those do result in a lot of of pick actions.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, no questions there. What else do you have?
All right, so let's say you go to the Public Integrity Commission. And you say, hey, look, here's my situation. I I think it's, you know, it's clean. Give me a clean bill of health. The Public Integrity Commission says, no. You can still request a waiver under the statute. Under the statute, it says, e- even if we've given you a a bad bill of health, you can request a waiver. In my experience, that has never, ever, ever been granted. I've never seen pick grant a waiver. So while it's in the statute, don't rely upon it. Don't don't think it's your friend. This this place is not is not friendly to school employees. I've had a number of school districts go through the process of going beyond pick, okay? One of our districts is talking about doing it right now. Let's have our own board ethics policy. Let's have our own board conflicts of interest policy. Let's have our own ethics policy. I don't make policy, but I don't think it's a good idea, because we've got the Public Integrity Commission rules there for a reason. Those are the general benchmarks. If if we go further, the question becomes, why do we need to go further than what what the school has set out for us? There are enough pitfalls for board members who are volunteering their time. Let's not make it harder on them. So so we have tended to be cognizant of the fact that there are so many limitations on board members with regard to their conflicts of interest as it is that we don't want to put more limitations on them. It would just make their jobs more difficult. How about specific, specific examples that 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 you all have navigated successfully or unsuccessfully? Other positions you all have? Do you have any concerns about boards you may be on, may have joined? Maybe thinking about joining? Anything along those lines you want to discuss? If if now is is a good time to discuss that, I'm happy to discuss that. Again, we want to do it in a hypothetical situation, because I don't want you saying anything being recorded that's going to come back and and hurt you.
I I don't have a question in regard to that, but what I do have a question on and maybe look for some advice.
Yes.
Is the board member's responsibility to vote on a subject. Lots of times, people or a board member would come back and either recuse himself or they would abstain from voting on a on a particular motion. I've always been under the understanding that it's a it's a board member's responsibility to vote on every motion unless they have a conflict of interests. What's your opinion on that?
I I would agree with that and and here's why. The way the statute is written, Title fourteen, Chapter ten, talks about how a school board operates. Now, it it, let's say you're not a school board. Let's say you're a corporation. You're a New York Stock Exchange listed corporation. And you decide not to vote. What is the effect of that? It's neither a yes vote nor a no vote. It's a non vote. But what's unique about school boards is in in order to pass, we need a majority of the whole board to pass a motion. Not just a majority of those that are voting, not just a majority of those that are sitting around the table that evening. So, un- unless I can't vote because I I have to recuse myself from this issue, because it's a contract dealing with my family member or my personal business, and I can't even talk about it. Or I have to abstain, for example. I have to abstain on this because I just don't know enough about it. Well, why not? Why don't you know enough about it? Why don't you ask questions? Why don't you become more informed? Is is something that, you know, a position that some people would take. I don't decide right or wrong. But other than that, when people just abstain for the sake of abstention, it, you know, I view it as trying to be a little bit cute. It it's really nothing more than a no vote, right? Because i- in the school system, a abstention is, for all intents and purposes, it is a vote against the motion. In any situation where you need three votes to pass any motion, no matter how trivial, it could be something as as minor as, you know, let's change the start time of tonight's meeting by fifteen minutes or something as major as, how are we going to use referendum funds? It it a an abstention and a and a recusal is an absolute no vote. So if it's going to be a no vote, let's just call it a no vote. Go out there and vote no.
Our board consists of seven members, so that requires us, number one, for us to have a quorum. Two, at our meeting, we must have four and to pass any motion, we must have.
I don't know why I thought you had five. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Laws.
Say it's the same thing that goes. So so in in summary on that, every board member is expected to vote unless they have a reason for recusal.
It it's, yeah, I I would agree with that. I mean, you you've taken an oath to carry out the the best interests of the kids in Colonial School District. It's more of a policy issue than a legal issue. But, you know, bearing in mind that an abstention is a no vote and you need four, I'm sorry, not not three votes to carry any motion. I'd like to think it's the COVID that clouded my judgment there when I said it was a five member board, not a seven member board. But, you know, if i- if an abstention or a recusal is a no vote, I I just question why anybody would would recuse or abstain unless they had good reason to do so. There there's, there is no reason to abstain or recuse unless you have a reason. When an abstention or a recusal is, for all intents and purposes, a no vote.
Any other questions or comments? Robin, anything? Chris, anything? Ron?
No.
You good? Cheyenne? Jim, for your information, I'm not sure whether you know it or not, but we have a member, we consider her a member of our board as a student. That's that's with us, Cheyenne Faircall. So she's here learning about these things as much as what we are, getting reminded on. So we, I appreciate your time and I'm sure the other board members appreciate your time as well.
I'm I'm happy to do it. I wish I could be with you live. I'm sure Dr. Menzer told you I I took a COVID test this afternoon. I'm symptomatic. So I'm sure I'll be okay. I don't have it that bad, but I I didn't want to give it to you all for obvious reasons.
We appreciate that. Even though we have had our shots. I appreciate it, Jim. All right, anything else? From anybody? Thanks, Jim. Jim, thank you very much again. I appreciate it. And we look forward to your cooperation and working with us. You've always been a been a very good resource for us and we're not shy about calling you up and asking you a question.
Very happy to do it. I wish you all the the best of luck with your meeting this evening and I thank you for your time.
There's no other topics that we have for the special board meeting, so I will adjourn this meeting with a motion and then be be prepared to go into executive session. So I hear a motion to adjourn the special.
I'm going to adjourn.
Move second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you.